I count on board to read.
Me too.
Just turn your flash.
What are we doing over here?
The park.
Donating to the parks.
Oh, yeah.
Donating to the park is tax exempt, you know, nonprofit, so.
Nice. We're talking up over there.
I think that's in the model of the park administration.
You gotta read all of it.
Wherever the most of the city government is.
Right.
Oh, it's meeting order?
Yep.
Hand for the blood, please.
A allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I get it.
Yeah.
Alderman Johnson. Here. Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Edman.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman woman Aubrey Stern.
Here.
Mary O'Leary.
Thank you very much. It takes us down to the approval of the agenda.
Approval. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Nope, got aye in there. I promise you all, slow down tonight. Suzie. All right. So that takes us down to the city administrator's report, please.
So I've given you an updated report at your seats. Really nothing earth shattering. We'll finish up performance reviews on Monday, and then we'll start our insurance process on March 1st. Also, we have the virtual MML legislative session that starts in a couple of weeks. That'll be before the next board meeting. We'll be doing that here in the boardroom. And that'll be so that we don't have to travel to Jeff City to go to it. I just am not comfortable yet being on the road, staying in a hotel, and being in a crowd of people. So they gave this as an option. I think it's a good one. Any questions about anything else that's on the report?
Takes us to our staff reports. Eric?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. All right.
Yes, sir.
I gotta have at least one.
Okay.
You talked about inspecting the golf carts. I mean, did you ever really find anything?
We never had any findings on a golf cart. I mean, basically what we checked for at the time is before we were allowing UTVs, which makes sure somebody didn't soup it up and have a 40 mile an hour golf cart. And secondly, that it could stop in a designated amount of time to show that the braking was fine, and we've never had any issues with that, so.
So with the UTVs, we have a few more.
We don't inspect anything on those. I mean, the requirements.
We have a few more requirements of the vehicle.
I don't know that we do. I mean, they still needed the placard, they needed the flag if they're at night, if we're riding at night.
I mean, like brake lights, signal lights?
They don't require any of that if they're running through the day, but if they're at night, they need to have working signal lights and brake lights. But we don't inspect for that.
Personal property tax, we ask for, make sure it's going to pay for it.
Yes. And insurance, yes. And all of those are just requirements that are with their permitting process, so. All right, thank you.
Steve Wilson?
Evening, everyone.
Good evening, brother.
Everybody has my report, lots of stuff in there. Let's see, staff continues to do painting inside the water treatment plant over the winter months while we don't have the condensation on the tanks and piping inside the water plant. Lots of routine stuff going on. We did have a problem with our sludge truck, you'll see. It's developed a rather large oil leak. We did bring a guy in, he crawled under there, looked at it. So it looks like maybe something on the rear of the engine block, and he'd have to pull the transmission to get to it. Looking at somewhere maybe $2,000, $3,000 for repairs. We use that truck, you know, three or four days a week, so.
What year is that truck, Susan?
That one is a '93. It's a '93 International.
So is it pretty reliable other than that, or?
Yeah, yeah, the truck's great. Minus the oil leak, it's leaking on my parking lot, so.
It goes about three or four miles a day, but it probably runs quite a bit.
Yeah, it's short trips, you know, from Mississippi Lime to the water plant, from the water plant down to the wastewater plant. But, you know, lots of little trips through town, but that's the truck we got, so.
Right.
And I mean, other than an oil leak, there's nothing else wrong with it, so.
So what do we need to do to get that repaired?
Tell me, I can spend some money on it.
When you're under $5,000, we can just close the warranty period.
We'll get something lined up with that. Other than that, anybody got any questions? We did get approval on our supervised program from DNR. Dave could speak to some of the approval process if needed. He's here from Cochrane Engineering. If anybody has any questions on that. All right.
Okay, thanks to Steve. Toby?
You guys have my report, just to go over a few things. As mentioned on the top there, we have some items from the St. Gene National Historical Park logo on them, including these tumblers and some mugs now at the Welcome Center for sale. And we should have some shirts and hoodies and such available probably next month or so to add to the, and I can add some shelving down there for the display cases. Upcoming events, on February 6th, we'll have the Chocolate Walk in town. We already have, more than two-thirds of those tickets are sold already. So if you're looking to get last minute tickets to the Chocolate Walk, I would recommend you don't wait too long because they'll probably be sold out again this year. We'll have the bicentennial photo display at the Welcome Center from February 11th to March 2nd. That will include more than 200 photos taken from around the state by professional amateur photographers. Adding to that, we're going to have a display of entries from St. Genevieve Middle School in the state's bicentennial poster contest. One of those done by local artists was in the top 16 in the state. And we're trying to set up something to recognize her, but we do have her piece of artwork that'll be one among those on display. A Cold de Sodat, which usually takes place late April, was canceled this year. They've had it for various reasons, including the COVID situation for not having, moving forward with that event. But we might have a new event added this year, May 22nd, 23rd. Candy Mahiron down at Sass Fass Creek is putting together a Pioneer's Day event, which will include some craft demonstrations, possibly live music down at her place on St. Mary's Road. On the state grant update that I've included there, we had a virtual meeting this week that gave some of the details where the Missouri Division of Tourism has some additional funds that have been released, and they will, should get that breakdown hopefully tomorrow in terms of what amount St. Genevieve will be eligible for. It'll be 100% where no match is required from our end of it, so they'll have a formula breakdown, what amount of money we'll be eligible for, and we won't have to match that. Let's see, print materials on the backside there. The Tourism Tax Commission approved spending money on three different print items. And one of those will be event cards, which were sent off. Hopefully, we'll have them printed and backed by the Chocolate Walk, so when people come to the Welcome Center to get a piece of chocolate, they'll also be able to get the card that tells them all the events coming up for the year. Last item I have is I went to the Kaskaskia Cahokia Trails Meeting today. So that information is not in here. But that's a group that represents various historic sites from Cahokia down through Prairie de Rocher, Fort de Shart. One of the things they talked about was working to have improved signage on that side of the river that'll direct people to the ferry landing. So both letting them know where it is, because there's a lot of backroads you can take to get down there. Hopefully, they can get some signage up that also indicates whether the ferry is running or not to try to save people that drive down from Route 3 before they get that far. And they're also looking at helping to lobby for ferry funding from the Illinois side of the river. Currently, the Modoc, St. Gene Modoc Ferry is funded with money from Modot. They don't get any money from the Illinois Department of Transportation, but they're hoping to remedy that. They see the importance of having that ferry run over between the two states, so. Are there any questions? Yes?
Toby, when you talk about the state grant program, you talk about money carved out for St. Genevieve that we're eligible for. If we don't qualify for that, do we compete for that money with anybody else? Or is that money just getting put on a shelf?
We are, we're eligible for it. So what they, this is a matching grant, which we take part in every year. Usually, it's a 50-50 grant. Last year, they made it a 90-10 grant for the current fiscal year. So we are eligible for money, I've reported on before, $8,600 from the state by spending $860 on our end. So that's one program we have going, and we're going to use that for social media. They announced, the governor released additional funds, $3 million for tourism. So they just had the meeting this week that says they're going to divide that up among the 40 DMOS they work with, using the formula they always use. And then they're going to let us know, like I said, tomorrow they should hopefully have that information to us, what money we're eligible for. And all we have to do is put together the grant application, find a way to utilize it under their regulations for using it. Usually, it's, you know, outside of 50 miles from here, out of state. Neither of those things are a problem for us. Usually, they like the logo for Missouri to be included in that part of the packaging also. And so it shouldn't, it shouldn't be just a matter of our end doing paperwork.
Do you feel pretty strongly?
Yeah. I'm just not sure what the amount is going to be yet, and we'll hopefully find that out tomorrow. All right, thanks.
Thank you. That takes us down to our COVID discussion. We have the honor of Jennifer Wheeler from the Health Department is joining us tonight. And what about the vaccine?
So we finally have it. We finally have some, so that's exciting. We've been ordering it for weeks. And we're going to combine efforts with the hospital, they receive some as well. And we're going to do 500 shots Tuesday at the community center, and then 400 Wednesday. So that's good.
How do people, I heard about it, but I understood, by the time I heard about it, they were full.
I know.
So how does a person in St. Genevieve, and that's the biggest, I'm going tomorrow to Cape Girardeau to get a shot. I heard, somebody sent me an email, and I followed through and got through. It's a really good system. So, and that's my big thing, is for people in this area to, and I understand tomorrow there's a shot in Perryville. It's an opportunity to go to Perryville, too, to get a shot, too. So that's the biggest thing, I think, especially for some of our elderly people who might not have the internet or be, that's, it's been statewide, so.
Right, and the first set that we sent out, it was a link that you had to click on, and then there were issues with that. So the second round, we did do just phone calls so that those folks would be able to have every opportunity to call in, just like everybody else. That's just what we're going to have to do, is put it out there and hope word of mouth, you know, people call in. We have people calling every single day, and we keep telling them, just call us every day if that's what you need to do, so that we get the word out. Yeah, but hopefully now that they've released vaccine, hopefully, we will keep getting a couple hundred every week, and we can just keep doing this till we start knocking some people out. But at least it's here.
You gotta be in a tier.
You do, you have to be in 1A, 1B, and 1B is tier 1 or 2. They haven't opened up tier 3 yet.
Why is the state of Missouri, I've read on the news, the state of Missouri is one of the worst states?
We're in last.
Pardon me?
We're last, apparently.
Yeah, why is that?
I don't know. I can't answer that. I don't know if the governor or whoever's at the top didn't fight hard enough for vaccine. I have no idea.
Misinformation. I was listening to the program, and the governor was on it this afternoon, and he said, and that question got asked, and he said it's, the information that they got is not accurate. And he says, that's why it's important to talk to your local health departments and stuff like that, so.
So is all of the first vaccine going to be given out before any of the second shot?
I'm not following.
You know, is everybody that qualifies for the first shot will get that before there's any of the second shot given out?
Well, so when you get the first shot, you get the second one four weeks later. And so we've already given out 200 doses to the hospital, and they've already, this week is their second shot. So there have already been some that have completed both.
Right, and I understand, you know, first responders and necessary, but I mean, in the general republic, the general public, are you, you know, how is the first or second, you know, with a limited number of vaccines?
Right. So we have 500 for Tuesday, February 2nd. Those people will be told you need to come back March 2nd for your second shot. The state tells us that three weeks after the first one, they will send us the vaccine for the second one. Let's hope that's the case. But that's what we're told what will happen. So we don't ever have to order for the second dose. We're just automatically, it's going to be shipped to us, so.
That second dose is critical for the whole vaccine to be effective, then?
I think it's a 50% effective rate after the first dose, and 95% or 96% after the second dose. So it is important that you finish it.
How long does a person have to get the second dose? I know they can't have it before four weeks. How long?
It's actually, they actually granted a four-day grace period. So if for any reason you do have to get it a couple of days early, that's okay. And any time after. They're not saying to repeat it if you're late.
So you're saying that that, you know, if you have the first one, that automatically gets a dose for the second one, but is it entitled to that person, or is?
Correct, yep, yep. Yep.
So how does that person know that, or they get notified, or?
We'll tell, so whenever they show up February 2nd, they get a card that gives them the lot number and everything for the vaccine that they're getting that day. In the event that they would have a reaction a couple of days later, there's a phone number they need to call, they need to report their lot number, all of that. And on that card, it will say you show back up March 2nd to get your next one, same time.
Has there been any reaction?
So far, the only ones that we've heard about are like fatigue and a sore arm. But I've heard that if you've had COVID, the reaction to the vaccine is a little worse than someone who hasn't had COVID. And by worse, they mean like maybe you'll run a low-grade fever for a day or two, body ache, something like that. But I haven't heard of any serious reactions. And we're giving them Moderna, we won't be getting the Pfizer here.
Any other questions? Suzie, you have anything? Okay. Thank you, Jennifer, thanks for coming. I appreciate that. Okay, takes us to committee reports.
Not much to report on the park board. We had our first meeting since October. We had that on Tuesday, canceled November and December. Everything went well. The fundraising subcommittee gave a update with their ideas, so there'll probably be some future fundraising meetings separate from that. The park board agreed to the Community Foundation of the Ozarks account that we voted on in December, so I think we're moving forward with that. And we have a couple of grants in the resolution for the NICE agenda, so. Other than that, just trying to keep the momentum.
And also a new member, right?
Yeah, Amy's in the crowd tonight, she is one of our newer members.
She's on the agenda.
Oh, yes, for reappointing or whatever.
So are we receiving our funds from the cell phone tower?
Far as I know.
Yep, we're getting monthly payments.
So do we turn those over to the park board then, or?
What we did was we budgeted for their line item that they put money out for their improvements. We just got it budgeted with that money in there. So when it comes in, then we'll have that again for next year, same company. Okay. Anybody else? All right, takes us down to any public comments? Public comments, takes us to the consent agenda. Before we start that, we need to pull Resolution 2021-24 from the consent agenda. It's going to be pulled. So you won't be voting on that.
You should have an updated or amended.
The Pam sent that out.
It's different in the title. It's just better describes what we're actually ordering. We did not have the right right away.
So we're getting rid of that completely from the?
For a few minutes. That one we're getting rid of, but we're going to replace it with the amended one here. But we have to, some procedures here, Mr. Happy has us going through here, so.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the deletion of Resolution 2021-24.
Second?
All in favor of that?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? So now what I need to do is I'm going to read Resolution, the new Resolution, 2021-24, the title. It says, "A resolution of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, stating intent for the St. Genevieve Street Department to apply for a grant from the St. Genevieve County Community Development Fund in an amount not to exceed $2,700 for two automated external defibrillators, AEDs, and two sets of child pads."
Motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one opposed? It takes here our consent agenda. Deal with that? Takes us to old business. The second reading of Bill Number 4404, An Ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, Repealing Section 380.190 of the Municipal Code of Ordinances.
Move through it. I second that.
Have a first and a second. All right, a real call, please.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yep.
Alderman Edman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Aubrey Stern?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4404 now becomes Ordinance 4327.
Thank you. It takes us to new business. Apparently, we have a cemetery maintenance bid discussion.
That's because the bid has come in over our budgeted amount. So we had a discussion on trying to cut out some of what the street and parks departments were talking before. It's a couple of days a week, early in the season, and it eases off as the season goes by. Still, it's a couple of days a week that we're cutting grass at the cemeteries. So we had, I had estimated about $18,000 for the city to be cutting it. We give ourselves $10,000 out of the cemetery fund into the street department to help aid the personnel. We brought it to the board for approval. The board wanted to go with the $10,000 number, thinking that that was going to be what we would come in with, or somebody would come in with a bid to cut those two areas. Again, we only had one person that showed up that was eligible for bidding. And that was because there were no ones that were there, and it was a mandatory meeting that we had sent out. And we let everybody know that, we put it in the ad in the paper. So if anybody else was going to submit, they would not have been eligible, so we didn't get any other bids. The one bid came in from Kanji Landscaping. Bid was for $16,800 each year, so a total of $50,400 for three years. Again, we budgeted $10,000, so you have options. You can approve this, and then we'll bring back the contract. You can reject it, you can reject all bids, which there's one bid. If we can reject it, we can keep cutting it. We can just cut it again this year. If you want to go out for bids again next year, or we can approve it, and we can rebudget for what it's going to cost to cut this year.
So if I read this correctly, you're saying it's more than we had budgeted. But even the amount that it was already costing us was more than what we had budgeted as well, correct?
Right.
So the bid to outsource it is actually $2,000, well, $1,200 cheaper.
Yeah, based on my estimate, I mean, we don't, I don't have exact numbers, but based on the amount of hours it took us over the season to cut, what I figured, the amount of work that was going into it, it was about $18,000, $18,000 to $20,000.
Got a question for Gary.
Yeah.
You know, when it comes to, you know, some years over others where we have, like in the past and stuff, where we have a very wet year, or we have something other than that, is there a big difference in cost, or?
Probably the biggest difference is the timeframe. You know, a couple of years ago, we were still cutting grass beginning of November. So you're talking a couple of weeks, few weeks, maybe up to a month longer.
And that may be something that we'll have to consider. If weather conditions would advance, we've got it based over April, October, cutting time. So if we go over that, then we'll have to flood it ourselves, but it may just be one time. So on the cutting, too, or in the bid, is it, and I didn't read it, I'm sorry, are they going to cut it every week, every couple of weeks? Can't get above a certain height, which is six inches. So between three and six, and you have to maintain that. Yeah, that's good, because that's usually in the spring of the year, grass is growing faster. Yeah, you have to cut it more often. Yes. I'm sure these people are professionals, so they know.
Well, your contract includes a provision for performance and our right to discontinue services. Well, they mowed it before. That's the same company we had prior to us taking it over.
Do they, I don't know.
Yeah. And they did a great job at first, but they way underbid it. I mean, way underbid it. What was that number? Do you remember, Joe? No, I don't, but it was, I mean, we jumped on it. And they realized that they did not bid properly, and.
It's a big job, man.
Yeah, it was more than what, and they were just starting at the time, but I'm fully confident that they can handle it now.
Yeah.
You know, they know what they're up against now.
Absolutely.
My only concern and stuff is whenever we did stop using them, you know, and the city went back to mow it, it was a much improved job by the city, you know, of mowing it. I mean, there was some concerns, remember that?
There was, but that's because they could not devote the time that they needed to for what we were paying them.
Right, both contracts, contracts.
They fully admit that.
Right.
Well, it sounds like if we see them underperforming, we need to challenge them. Sorry, Suzie.
That's okay, just let me know when I, there's a break.
Go for it, go for it.
So Happy, would this contract be a three-year contract, or do we have the option of a one-year or a three-year contract?
We put it in as a three-year contract with two extra years if they wish to list that. So it is a three-year contract so that they can, we figure it's a way for them to budget for a number of years to be able to make enough. Based on a single year, you would probably lose money, but over the three years, it would be in the benefit of the city to go that route.
Okay. And then I was also curious, what Gary thinks about his crew continuing to do both cemeteries? Or is there an option that we could redid one cemetery, and the city crew continues to take care of another? Just wondering if there's any other options we could look into.
I prefer to get rid of all of them.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
You know, it's just, we have to devote so much time, like you said, in the spring, where we need to be patching our roads and, you know, and that, we're having to spend more time on the cemeteries, you know, which takes away, and usually by then, we don't have the summer help yet.
Yeah, it's just, it's the amount of time that we have to dedicate to cut those, to cut the grasses in the spring, that it would be nice to get rid of it. But, and the thing is, we also now have a bid amount that's out there. So if we would go back out for bids, you're looking at that number being exposed, and other contractors would then have the advantage of seeing what that number is, and basing their bid on that. That would be fair, so.
I think we should go with these guys.
So Happy, one question comes to mind. You know, if we add this contract to our overall budget and stuff, there is no savings.
There would not be any direct financial savings, but we would be able to keep up with what we need to keep up, which is.
So this would be an additional expense?
And mind you, we're still cutting a lot of grass. We're still cutting progress Parkway, the park.
Yeah.
We're not out of the moment business, we're just on a boom. Some tedious bit of business.
Right.
But that business is people keep, if you get, if the cemetery gets out of whack, people will talk to you.
Oh, yeah.
But I look at it as, former Alderman, Tom Couch used to always say. When I look at it, as former Alderman, Tom Couch used to always say, whatever we're paying our guys to do it actually costs double because they're not doing the job they're supposed to be doing. Instead, they're cutting grass, so it's actually costing us double. So there, we'll be getting more work that needs to be done instead of them mowing all the time.
Yeah, I mean, especially this past year, we've stressed how much we need to get streets done and everything. So if we're taking time away from that to mow, then...
Well, to Bob's point, we do see a savings. If we're paying 18 grand, our city guys do it, and we're paying 16, eight, it's a budget, it's a math problem with the budget for 22 that needs to be addressed, and we can't lose sight of that, so...
But keep in mind, we're not paying our people anything extra. So we pull 10,000 out of the cemetery fund, which we would have enough to cover this extra expense. But we're not pulling that and then using it for our employees. So it is, it is a, it is more of an expense for the cemetery to do this. But what we're doing is saving our people based on, again, what we have, what I figure it costs them to do the cutting over that length of time, and that we can get other jobs done.
It's also saving on our equipment, too. Going around all those headstones and weed eaters and all that stuff. I mean, I think it's the right way to go.
How much cemetery funds bring in, you know?
About 33,000. We have some other expenses along with that, but...
Well, it could all be taken out of there, right?
Yeah. And I would plan on...
That's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, that's what we're...
Oh, yeah.
Well, then we need to move on, I think.
So what do you need, then? A motion to approve that, or...
Uh, just a motion to approve the bid from K&amp;J.
I make a motion to approve the bid as presented from K&amp;J.
Second.
Have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good discussion.
Is there any urgency on this or not?
Pardon?
Is there any urgency on this or not?
Not really.
Well, contract the routine.
Yes. Okay, that takes us to Bill Number 4407, first reading. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal for professional design services with concrete engineering for water main replacement on 4th Street from Biltmore Street to Robert Street, and amending the water fund, Number 30, line item 8,000, infrastructure improvements. Is there any discussion on that, or...
I have a question.
Okay.
You know, just so we don't follow in the past of some of our previous cost overruns and stuff, I mean, I'd like to see, you know, when the engineer comes back, and will they come back with a cost system that does prior to...
So the, what the construction will be?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, that construction estimate be a certain percentage, you know, close to what our bids come in and stuff, so that we don't run into the wall problem and cost overrun, so a lot of money, you know, that we get hit with those. I'd just like to see a percentage, you know, put in there that we feel is, even though, you know, on a waterline project like this, it is different, you know, but I just think we need to be accountable, and copper needs to work with us to be closer to projected numbers and stuff whenever we put a project up for bid.
So what we could probably do is plug in a bigger number, a different number for the contingency, to make sure we cover any of those extra sections of pipe that we missed last time, or areas that we have to, you know, cut that we didn't plan on. We can do that.
And this is not a good example, because I know when you go underground, it's a tough, you know, tough thing to do, and we approved, you know, most of them. It's just that I just like to be closer to our number and...
No change orders.
Right. Well, I, you know, there's projects like this, there's gonna be change orders. You know, I understand. I just, I don't like getting tossed, you know, that should have been able to be closely regarded.
The question I have on this, too, this street is in line for asphalt this year. We already talked about it. Are we gonna be able to get this done in a timely manner to get that asphalt on board on that stretch of road? Can we get the drafting, engineering out there and get it contracted?
We can, we can move quick on this for sure. I assume you plan on putting out a street package to have the work done this summer?
Yeah, that's what we want to do. That's in line, because we've got some help coming on the top end of that, and we want to come down, come down the hill all the way to Robert Street with the new asphalt on that road.
So I think this, this is a good example where your supervised program is gonna pay off, pay off for you. That's gonna save you a solid month out of the schedule, getting this moved forward. We'll push hard on this and get it out of the bid. I'll say, early spring, I think, is when we can look and get it started. This will be a shorter project than what your last, last project was, less water main to be replaced. I think we can certainly look at having this work done early to midsummer.
Okay.
And then that would, maybe if this can be kind of slated for last, then the strip...
That's fine. We just want to get that stretched and something. Because the road's just helping us on the top end of this, and we've had a lot of questions about that road, about getting asphalt.
Mr. Mayor, we control that, though, right? Like, we can define, by performance of the contract, we can define a due date, if you will, and penalty for not meeting that, right? I don't have to review the contract as it gets drafted, so I don't know, but I mean, it seems...
My concern is, we don't want, we're gonna tear a street up, and the street schedule of replacement, a lot of people ask me about, when are you gonna get that street asphalt?
The point that I make is that largely, we're in control. We can define...
Nothing good about what was said here. So, yeah, we move forward. I just want to move forward on this and get going on it.
Yeah, I got another concern for Gary and stuff. Down through that area and stuff, spent some time, the gas company went down through there and did a lot of, you know, whatever they do and stuff down through there. And those have been done with concrete fill-ins and stuff. You know, we've had a concern about the difference in expansion and contraction. You know, is there anything we can do as we overlay this thing, or are we gonna have more of those same bumps pop up in time? Because that's, really makes that rough down through there, the difference from, you know, the asphalt to the concrete and stuff where it's changed in elevation. But, you know, is there anything that we can check into that might help eliminate, you know, some of those coming back through the pavement?
That, I'm not sure.
I think we would have to look at a different program on how we do that paving, because you probably still want to put some concrete below the surface to stabilize it. Otherwise, you, I know you've seen this, where the asphalt begins to dip, because it begins to, it begins to compact. One of the problems with pouring asphalt with asphalt is that it, that will compact, and then you'll have this bump.
Right.
So we can look at a different way of repouring that. You can put concrete down below as the base, and then come back with a couple inches of asphalt. And then that would keep your top from expanding differently than the rest of the street.
You mean, where the patches are now and stuff to redo?
What we, what we were probably doing this, we would look at a mill and pave, so all of it would be asphalt on the top layer.
Right.
So you're gonna build the concrete as well as the other. So your concrete's gonna end up as a base, and that's what you want.
Any more discussion on that? I have a first, I have a first on the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Suzy. All right. Takes us to Bill Number 4408. An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Municipal Ban.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Bill Number 440409, I'm sorry. An ordinance allowing the 2021 Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday to apply to the local sales tax of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, between April 19th and April 25th, 2021.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Takes us to Bill Number 4410. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County to assist in the funding and cooperation of the St. Genevieve County Recycling Center.
No approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Takes us to Bill Number 4411. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and St. Genevieve County, for the county, for the county to provide 911 dispatching services for the calendar year 2021.
No approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to Bill Number 4412. An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, extending the pandemic sick leave policy.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have a motion for a second reading?
No approval.
I make a motion for a second reading of that.
So I have a first and a second. All right. All in favor of that?
Aye.
An ordinance, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, extending the pandemic sick leave policy.
Motion to approve. Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Aubrester?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4412 now becomes Ordinance 4328.
Thank you. On the other business, David, could you come up to the podium, please?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this, this week, David worked on some letters to send out. We do this in the spring of the year, and I, it was for Gary, and I've talked to Suzy about this already, but about an awareness letter going out to people that live in the flood plain behind the, behind the levee, you know, the spring of the year, usually you'd get some snow melt, you'd get some rain. We don't want, what we don't want to do is scare people. We want to let them be aware of how we communicate and things we do in case there is an emergency, where we have to move people, or they need to find out about that, so...
Yes, I prepared a letter, sent it to the mayor. I think he forwarded it on. It just notifies those who live in what's called Zone X, or the area protected by the levee within the city limits, renters and owners, that here's the chance of a flood this year, which is minimal this year compared to last year. Less than 50% chance of a moderate flood between now and the end of March. That may increase in the spring, but conditions aren't lending itself to an increase. And then it gives them some suggestions on get insurance, have a plan in place, know where you're gonna go. So it's, it's just, and then it gives them some websites to go to to get information. It clearly says in the letter, "We do not anticipate the levee to break in any way, shape, or form."
Because you do, you get people, and we don't want to put fear in anyone, but you ought to have a healthy respect. And I think most people that live, and Amy lived down in the, on the hay down there, they have a healthy, they understand, you know, because you get flash floods, and you get water all around you, and it's somewhat scary.
Yes.
You know, it's just awareness.
Dave, who actually inspects that levee federally? Is there somebody?
Army Corps of Engineers.
They do that regularly, or...
I believe every couple of years, as far as a full inspection.
And this is business as usual. We do this every year.
We started this last year.
Started last year, yeah. Because what we had is, in the year prior to that, we did have a major flood, and the water was way up, and was up there long on that levee, you know. And it was never, and with the levee, you, when the water's up on the levee like that, you do have, you have boils and stuff that people watch, and you've got to be mindful of that, because the power of the water is, I mean, there's big levees that can fail, you know. This is a very good levee. The levee board, which meets once a month, they have people that maintain it, pumps and everything else, and do a really, really good job, you know, so...
Yep.
But everybody needs to be aware of that. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, anything else we need to talk about?
Are these gentlemen here for a work session?
We're gonna be for the work session. We'll be at the work session, so... All right, if there's no other business, I'll call this meeting adjourned. It'll take me a few minutes, and then go right into our work session. Let's go ahead. Five minutes, Mike. All right, so first up, we had a phone call come in to Alderman Rainey about Pine Street, Park Street, walkers, and some issues over there. So we figured it was a good idea to bring this as a work session, not as a regular item on on the agenda in a regular board meeting, so we can discuss the what the issues are. We've done a couple of small improvements out there in between time, but I think we've got members from the hospital that have some issues, they're they're seeing some problems with vehicle traffic and pedestrians, and I invite them to come up to the podium and if you don't mind.
I appreciate you guys entertaining our concerns this evening. I'm Joe Charlo, a physician at the hospital. This is Dr. Potler, our CEO, and everybody knows, obviously, Cher was the chairman of our board for many years. This came the problem came to my attention recently. As you know, we have a parking lot across from the hospital that's adjacent to the fire station, and that parking lot, a lot of our employees cross that parking lot to get into the hospital, walking through the hospital parking lot. What I what I observed while doing a procedure one day as a nurse who was circulating in my case, and she made a comment just in talking, she said, who is a close call this morning? She said, I was crossing the street, I got brushed by a car right down Pine Street. Now, may not sound like much unless you experienced this, but then I decided then that I would investigate whether this was a big problem, since when she made that comment, two other nurses in the room said, oh, boy, I tell you, people don't stop. You know, she said, we go to cross and they just keep going. I don't think anybody is wanting to hit anyone. I've been through that and have not paid much attention in a hurry. So I decided to talk around to the nurses on the nurses' station, comments like, people drive fast on that highway, no one ever stops, you better watch it, you better not cross that road if a car is coming, and, oh, yeah, they pass by and they wave, you know, not yielding the right of way. So it's a problem. And I'm just here as a physician and a concerned citizen that someone's going to get hit, and I think it's a dangerous crossing. We have a proposal that that Steve's going to share with you and what we would like to do, but all I'm asking as a physician and citizen that we can count on, you know, the city to maybe support us in some of these in any endeavor that we might have to improve the safety of our employees crossing crossing that Pine Street. Steve, just pass that along. This is a little, this is very simplified, but it's an idea of what we have. See what you think.
Thank you for your time this evening. I'm Steve Potler, Chief Executive Officer at the hospital. I've been here since August, so one of the things that I am still very much in a learning mode in how things work here. So I'm I'm one of the things I'm doing is trying to figure out how we can find a way to get proper notice to those who are driving on the street. One of the facts of life is that people are thinking about what they're going to do next. They less and less think about what they're doing in the moment, and so I think that's really a lot of what Dr. Charlo was talking about, is just the fact that people are just unaware of where they're going. And there is a fair amount of traffic on that street, some at ours, some at the adjacent neighborhoods. And so the request is that we consider whatever we can do to help alert drivers to the fact that there are pedestrians, because there are low light conditions there, there are people who may be wearing dark clothing on their way into work. So what what can we do to help alert drivers to the fact that there are pedestrians and that they need to yield to them as opposed to ducking or driving around them and and hoping that there's not someone coming the other way that they neglected to see. So I know that we'll be talking with Happy as well about the idea of what can we do on the hospital side to make sure that the people that are employees who are crossing are going to be doing so safely, so there are alerts, there may be some other things that we need to do physically to help the employees take their share of the responsibility for safe crossing. But people are are driving fairly fast on that street. Just anecdotally, I was on Fourth Street for several months, and I would walk that every morning very early, a lot of traffic and limited lighting. So how can we help pull something together from both sides so that we can alert people and have employees use safe practices to get across the street?
Chief, is the trailer still available, at least to get a gauge on how much traffic is going through that?
I have to check with Sheriff's Department.
And I'm assuming that's a twenty five hour zone or twenty five mile per hour zone?
Twenty. But he's not incorrect. I mean, I think damage rate, the accident's a thirty.
Right.
So I'll certainly step up some of the force there.
Does that lit up? Is there a light right there?
No.
No?
Right now, there are a couple of signs that shows pedestrian crossing on either side, and there's a cross, there's white crosswalk across there. The problem is, it's not very obvious. You know, what I provided for you was basically an idea of maybe maybe us placing a sidewalk on the side where they walk out of just before crossing Pine Street, and a sidewalk on the opposite side, so we have basically a crosswalk where people would stand in before they would cross. But we'd need some type of signage or device that would call attention to anyone driving there. This is a crosswalk, you know, stop or slow down. The problem is, early in the morning, it's difficult to see someone crossing that street. Later at night, it's hard to see someone crossing that street. It's, you know, I've passed by and I've been told, you know, I was crossing the street and you just passed by. Honestly, it's 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 not a safe crossing, it's it's risky.
It's right in the middle of the street.
It is.
And there's, I don't know how much, what I thought about is, is your parking lot, it's up there towards Park up there, where there is a cross street where Park stops at at Pine, and there's a, this is essentially, we're crossing right in the middle of the street instead of naturally up on a corner, but I can see where that's up and out of the way to get back down, so.
Yeah.
Are crosswalks typically set by ordinance since they're an enforceable infraction if you don't use them?
No, generally, when you put a crosswalk in, you're crossing from sidewalk to sidewalk. You're not you're not crossing from parking lot to parking lot, so.
But if we put a sidewalk in this parking lot and a sidewalk in the parking lot across the street, that's a crossing. Would that qualify as a crossing? I'm just asking.
Well, with with any pedestrian crossing, it doesn't matter, because you have to stop for pedestrians.
Correct.
It doesn't matter whether what you're trying to do is just gain attention, that people are going to be crossing in this area. And I think what you're saying, you wanted, when you're talking about lighted area, you're talking about something that gains attention for the drivers, not necessarily street lighting.
Not a street light.
Right.
But something that can draw attention, something flashing, or, you know, advice or signage, or something that draws the attention.
There's no, there's no sign, and I was down there the other night, looked at it, you know, and the, but I can't, I should have went back again. And and most of your people, like, their shifts, when they're using this parking lot, is it at seven to seven o'clock in the morning, is it night, is it, when these people are, when's the most traffic on crossing the crossing this wall?
So probably the biggest risk is the surgery staff and some of those early staff coming in, because respiratory therapy, surgery, med surg, nursing, so all those day shift departments, they don't just come in at seven AM, many of them are coming in at five, five thirty.
Yeah, that's why it's dark there anyway.
The facilities, crew, they're coming in between five and six.
But do you feel, do you feel there's enough, I'm talking about street lights, you feel there's enough, is the street lit up enough at at night over there? And I don't know who, Mike, you got, you got, how's the lighting on the street over there?
I don't, I don't think it's optimal.
No.
I mean, I think it's passable, but I don't think it's optimal, especially in light of the situation.
I mean, can we put up a street light in there to, for that purpose of it, to add more lighting? It's still not going to solve your problem, because you're going to have to draw some attention, because you have a crosswalk in the in the in the middle of a street.
Correct.
Where a crosswalk, to me, should be up on a corner where you cross the street, you know, but it's not practical because of the where your parking lot is and where your facility is for to go either way, because they'd have to go all the way down the other end and cross.
Right.
That's even dangerous, more dangerous down there.
Yeah, they're not likely to do it. And then the street, walking on that street, there's not the sidewalk on either side that works really well for that either. So there is sufficient light not to stumble if you're walking on that street, but not optimal for someone to drive through and see you.
I think the only lighting on that street is from their parking, from both of their parking lots and the firehouse.
And we get frequent complaints from the neighbors already about the fact that we have lights. Some of them, we started to dim overnight where the park, where the parking lots are less used, and and so we have dimmed those lights where the people shouldn't be parking for night shift, but the rest of the parking lot, we have to keep lit for the people who do park in those other lots for safety.
And just underline sometimes the danger of crossing then, when it's raining, you know, when it's very cold, and people sometimes in a hurry to get across.
Yeah. So on your end of it, you're ready to put, you're going to, the the, the hospital is going to put sidewalks in?
We can put sidewalks in, and if if as much as anything, it's a visual cue that this is where you should cross to try and funnel people so that it's a little bit easier for drivers to expect where in the street people are going to be crossing, because they're probably just going to cross now, cross the street in that space that's paved wherever is closest to their car. So if we tell them, if we have that little little patch of sidewalk there that says this is where you should cross, it's at least a visual cue and maybe a little bit more of an expectation to the people who are crossing, and maybe to the drivers as well, they can see that there's a sidewalk there and give them a visual cue as well. So I think there is something, a little bit of something we can do on our part as well to help clue people in that there, you should expect pedestrians there.
And they're, to be honest, they're your employees and your responsibility.
Right.
So you do control that. What they what they do somewhat, they're off or coming to work.
Not as much as I'd like, but yes.
But it's not like, you know, the, a visitor to the hospital parks out front of the hospital, it's not, it's 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 your employee, so.
Correct.
That's my point is, I don't, I don't think we have any problem at helping out, but, you know, as a joint effort, you know, I think a sign up there, if you do that development, and maybe we put a flashing light there, you know, that flashes.
I like that idea of Dr. Charlos and stuff. The only problem with flashing lights, if they stay on all the time, people even get used to them, but, you know, they can put one right where they hit the button, and then a fairly substantial light comes on.
Something like that, yeah.
I cross that one at thirty two and C Road almost every day, and it's not flashing all the time, but the minute it flashes, you know, somebody's about to pull out, and I, I just think that's more effective to have it like that than flashing.
Well, the real all of it is, is is we can help out, but the hospital's responsibility here, it's, you've created the, and I don't know, I'm not saying you did anything wrong, but it's your parking lot and having to get your people, so you bear some responsibility. The city, but the city also is has some responsibility to protect people, too.
Right. There are some things that we can't do in terms of alerting drivers to that.
Right.
And so that's, that's what we need your help and your expertise on, because the right kind of sign, the right kind of alert is is your expertise. There are some things that we can do to make some improvements, and so we'll, we're, we will work with you to help determine what that should be on our side, so we can put something in it, have some skin in the game, if you will. But then, in terms of what is proper to do in a traffic area, that's, that's really the city's purview and.
Well, I think you leave that up to Gary and Chief and Happy, you know, and I, I think we, whatever improvements we can make, I'm all about making it safe for people, you know, so.
Maybe we can reach out to the license officers on the post on their Facebook, just as a reminder for crosswalk safety. I mean, we've got sidewalks discussions that we're working on, and we talked about crosswalk safety, so maybe if we get that message out there, it's just a, kind of puts it in the forefront of folks' minds.
Is there, is there any, is there any signs, y'all that go up and down that street, is there any signs that says, be aware, there are pedestrians, pedestrian crossing?
No, it's just a yellow sign, that thing that you may have put up, right? That shows pedestrian crossing on either side.
Yellow light sign.
Well, I'm thinking something needs to be up further than than when you get there, you know, while the driver that.
I mean, they're not right on the wall.
Okay.
The one is by the second entrance to the firehouse, and the other one's above their entrance to their south side parking lot.
And that was my other question, is, did that person get brushed? Are you, they're talking to them, are they, were they in that crosswalk, or were they trying to?
No, she was in, she was in the crosswalk.
Oh, she was, okay.
She was in the crosswalk, and she was arriving about six forty five in the morning.
Or nurses tend to be rule followers, it's the ER nurses that are. I'm an old ER nurse, so I'm taking personal experience.
Mr. Mayor, to that point, though, I mean, in a crosswalk, out of crosswalk, I mean, if you're getting brushed by a car, and that car is going is oblivious to a point where they're, they're going to brush a human at any speed, that that's an issue.
Well, it's an issue, but it's, you don't expect to see a human, and that's why they go rules against jaywalking.
Right.
Yes.
And the point is, is we're providing of, of, everybody, if we're up in the city, you cross at the corner, not Happy, he crosses wherever he wants. But we have a problem right here, because we have to get people from a, you know, other than one of the nice big, no, no.
Bridge, Starbridge, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get a grant for that bridge.
Your department wants to put that up with.
Right, right.
It'd be cheaper to put it in a parking garage.
Maybe we'll order that.
This is getting worse by the minute.
Certainly, if you light it, if you light it better, that's an improvement, if you have a sign, and then if you have enforcement there.
Well, and I think the sidewalk is a good first step for them to, right now, the nurses don't really have anywhere to stand, right, and they are waiting for cars, I've got family that lives back there, so I try to back there a lot, so, like, I know exactly where you're talking about. So, I mean, when the nurses are there, they are having to wait for a vehicle that isn't prepared to stop, because they weren't at there, there at that moment. They do kind of stand right at the entrance where.
It's Jerry.
If a car's turning in there.
It's an other problem.
So, so a sidewalk is a great safety, even aside from the crosswalk, just for your.
Right. Absolutely. You're exactly right.
Well, we're, we're, Chief.
Stop sign's like a hundred bucks.
Yeah, but the stop sign's not going to solve the problem.
If we stop them both at that intersection.
You're already stopping one way of traffic, and it's not stopping, you're going to stop them both ways, and I think as a through street, do you really want to do that?
Well, and you're going to hear from it, from those residents, if they're having to make two stops.
But if one of the complaints is that people are driving too fast and not paying attention to the people in the crosswalk, it's a momentary setback for them.
Just speed, though.
Chief, chief, you're, you're saying that because that ultimately helps you, right?
Like, as, I mean, like, like he says, you mandated this to yield the right of way to a pedestrian, so that's enforceable in itself. The problem is, most of the time you see that, you're going the other way, you have to turn around on a street that's already not safe with people in a, in a crosswalk to drive like an idiot, to go catch that person and write them a ticket for driving like an idiot.
Is it a stop sign or is it a yield sign that you need there? Yeah, I mean, especially in a sign.
I think a yield sign kind of runs into what Alderman Donovan said, you kind of get to where you want it goes.
But some, some sign is at high level, though, so as opposed to looking down at the street, you know, over your hood of your vehicle, or a white. the street, you know, over your hood of your vehicle for a white crossmark. I mean, some sign.
There is signage for the, for the crosswalk itself. It's not just the painted line. There are the yellow.
It's the pentagonal.
Pedestrian crossing signs. But like I said, we'll, we'll step up enforcement for right now. But we just can't be there 24 hours a day and.
Where do we take this from here? We could talk about this all that long. So.
So I think what we look at, first off is enforcement. That's the first thing we can do. We can look at the lighting situation out there because most of it's going to be ambient from the, from lots in the parking lots. Next thing is that we'll get together with the CEO and any other staff you want to talk about. Gary and I can talk to them about what their thoughts are and what, what our recommendations or suggestions could be. And then you're going to look at what the financial impact of that's going to be.
What's the thought on putting a crosswalk sign in the middle of the road?
And we could do that.
Well, who's the team?
For that purpose. If you go Farmington, do the zigzag around the one ways, they got a memory block up through there.
Right.
In the middle of the road?
Yeah, it's one of the collapse.
It's a sign that's made.
And that would help.
For right now. A sign that's made by, you know, mucostanders or. Well, I got an idea.
What do you think?
Little roads are spring loaded or if they get in.
Yeah, just bring a load.
This is kind of, so that, that street is concrete coming in right now. So the white lines kind of blend in with it.
Yeah. Everybody, Ashley's got the floor right now.
Thank you. So that, that street there is concrete and the white lines tend to blend in with it over time. I've been doing some reading on, just like some different types of sidewalk safety. And a lot of communities are having some success with having more archful crosswalks where it calls more attention to that, that moment. So.
So what you're doing in that case is stamping it and bringing a color. So you can like brickwork or something.
Yeah. Or you can have it more fun if you, if you want, get a little bit more artistic with it. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of people around here. But something to, to call a little bit more attention to it and then white line on light colored cement. So.
I think on your part, you need to funnel your people to that crosswalk. On our part, we got to spice up the crosswalk. And I like that idea of putting a barrier out there in the middle. And that's going to draw somebody's attention.
It will.
Yeah, they're yellow and.
It's just a little, little signs about, I think, three feet tall.
No, it's that high. That's four feet tall. Yeah.
I think that's a, that's a, and that shouldn't be too expensive. You yield the pedestrians in crosswalks. On any day. Take it out of Jerry's.
You're anchored, actually anchored.
All right. Anybody got any other questions? We'll do as we said and get going. And thank you for bringing it to our, Buck?
Well, didn't it say stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk?
No, you can give them either way, stop or yield.
More effective rather than yield. People think yield, maybe it's unbrusht the guy. You know, if it's yield.
Well, Happy, who's the team and what are the next steps on you guys? Just to make sure you guys are talking.
Oh, who's responsible?
Yeah.
It'll be me.
And me.
Yeah. We'll hold on a while.
Thank you. Thank you. I throw just one more piece about COVID. Thank God for County Health. They've been outstanding partners. We really appreciate everything that they've been doing with us to make it work. We are making plans to get in touch with all of our clinic patients. So we have ways of getting in touch with all of our patients. And so we'll go according to the tranches. And we're ordering every week just like they are. And so as we get more in, we've got at least the big community event next week. We're talking about if there is a need for another one or not based on our ability, our availability of vaccine. But in any case, once we start getting bigger, more lots of the vaccine, we'll be contacting all of our clinic patients to get them in. So it's not a mass event because some folks don't want to go to a mass event either. And so we're going to try and do our best to get people in to see the doctor they know, to get the vaccine in the clinic that they're used to coming to. So we're going to do everything we can to get the vaccine out to everybody who wants it and who's willing to take it. So we're chasing that real hard. And based on the changing dynamics, we're adapting every day, sometimes three or four times a day still, to make sure that we're doing, we're making the very most of the resources we have available. So just wanted to reassure you that.
So you've been getting the same vaccine as the health department?
Right. We're, yeah, we're getting the same vaccine. And in many cases, our nurses are injecting next to their nurses. And we're in constant daily, several times a day contact with them. So here's what we're hearing, here's what we're hearing, here's what we're getting, here's what we're getting. When can we do this together so we make the most of our resources? And so is, is cooperation unlike anything I've ever seen between the hospital and public health? There's never been a better time for it.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, Happy, you have another, one more work session?
Yep. The other item is UTVs. Alderman Donovan asked me about extending UTV permits for one to two years. You don't inspect them and do inspect golf carts. And the chief said we did away with those inspections as well. Should do away with those inspections. And our attorney would appreciate if we did away with those inspections. So since we've opened this up with one item, it's like, why not relook at what we do with those, those two items or with those two vehicles?
I'm pretty sure we discussed that a couple of years ago, extending that to two years, two years. And we all agreed yes at that time.
Yeah, we did, but we didn't officially act it.
So there was no ordinance to change the.
Well, we need to change that. What do you think, Bill?
Well, we got new members on the board now.
They don't do two years to go home alone with the county.
Yeah, but it needs to coincide with the same time the county does, you know, so.
We agree.
So when you say the county, I'm not familiar with.
The county's permit is two years also.
Okay.
But if we just go to a two year now, say, somebody got their permit this year and they're only going to renew it, I mean, you can't really coincide with the county.
We just, yeah, we just need to go two years and say.
Well.
It's not necessarily going to renew at the same.
No, it's not going to.
Depending on when the person is able to get their city one.
Yeah.
Yeah, Chief.
Okay. So what we can do is we can make both golf carts and UTVs every two years. And then we'll do away with inspections on golf carts. Still keep it where you have to show group insurance and your.
Is this a money maker for us?
I'd like to say something.
Yes.
I just wanted to point out, I would appreciate if we could still do an initial golf cart inspection. I'm, I'm fine with doing away with the annual, but because we have so many, you know, things that you need to adapt your golf cart for it to be permitted, I think we still need to have that initial one. But I agree that it might not be necessary when you come in to renew every year after you do.
So the attorney's opinion is that it then puts a liability on us if we want to require that they get an inspection done. And we need to have them do it from somebody that's certified. And at this time, we only have two golf carts that we are permitting. So we've got 14 UTVs and two golf carts. So I don't know if people are taking advantage of the golf cart part.
Is this?
I think there are a lot more than two golf carts riding around at any given time. So I think it might be an issue of people not renewing. And I'm, I'm personally guilty of that. I mean, I haven't driven my golf cart in a couple of months since I expired. But it's a pain to get it down to city hall in the winter and get it re-permitted. So I'm fine with doing away with the inspection. But I think we need to do a better job of making sure people are, the ones who are driving are actually permitted and getting the word out that when they need to renew because that's not been real clear in the past.
So not all, not all golf carts because they're not allowed in the county, I don't believe. But the UTV permits, do we make much off that?
It's, it's a, you can't make money.
Well, I mean.
It's for process.
Do we cover our costs on it even?
Take you an hour.
Because couldn't we just, couldn't we just say, if you have a county permit, that's all that's, I mean, why, why are we requiring them to have both?
Because I think we need to regulate some.
Well, it's already regulated if they have a county one.
Well, you can't regulate the people coming in from the county. And that's where most of them come from.
I mean, I don't, I mean, as long as you got a county permit, you can write it in the city limits. We're part of the county too. I don't see why we have to have our own separate one. If the county requires one, okay, let the county handle it. As long as you got your county permit, you can write it on the city.
Yeah.
I mean, we're a separate jurisdiction with the county. So usually, and I don't know if we get it before the county.
Well, I understand that. But I get my license for my cars through the state. I don't have to get one through the city. Why are we making ATV riders get one in two places?
I think originally we did that just to give them.
They didn't have it then.
Yeah, I know. But to get a look at what was going on the city streets. Getting a look at what kind of vehicles were on the city streets. We were looking at it. Well, now we've got advice and we shouldn't be inspecting anyway. We're not inspectors. So.
Well, I mean, I assume, get out of it completely, let the county handle it. As long as they got a county sticker, that's fine. Why, why overburden our system with a regulation that.
If there's not money to be made.
Yeah.
Why? And I don't need to know if we're covering our costs on it. I mean, let the county handle it.
I think it's, it's gotten more from that that you have to look at it as a safety issue too.
Right. And I disagree with you on that pretense and stuff because I've personally witnessed, you know, UTVs don't have flags, don't have some of the proper equipment. And that's what concerns me about the inspection. You know, can we, you know, could we just inspect them at their first time? And then if they renew, we don't have to inspect them. But I'm telling you, there's UTVs running around out here that don't have all the necessary.
Well, that's an enforcement issue. That's not, I can put my flag on and pass the inspection, take it off the next day.
Yeah, that's, how are you going to regulate that? It's.
I just assume let, let the county do it and ease the burden on the people that want to do it.
How many total permits do we have?
Four UTVs, just two golf courses.
The UTVs just renewed January 3rd. So people should be coming in to get those.
Right. So 16 permits, that can't be that much of a time saver. But I.
It's just a burden to the user. I mean, why have double.
Well, it's the average. I mean, if we've only had 14 so far, but is there an average?
The first year, we probably had 50, 75?
We probably had that many, but they're not renewing.
Right.
So nobody's checking.
Well, because they got their county one. They just assume, oh, I got the county and I need the city. I don't see a need for it either.
Well, we can't enforce anything that the county requires. I mean, we can keep our code on the books, but we can't, we can't enforce county laws. We have to enforce our laws.
I mean, can we, can we adopt an ordinance in?
You must have a county permit to.
In, in conjunction with the county, you know, whatever, you know, write an ordinance for whatever the county says, the city stands by.
Yeah, we can do that.
So that they have enforcement.
I mean, our ordinance can say, you must have a county permit to operate it within the city limits.
Right.
More people would be willing to get it. Oh, I live in the county. I don't need a city one. But then they need to come into town for something. As long as they got their county one, who cares?
But are we burdening the county? Because if you live in the city and you're not out in the county, do you need to get a county permit? No. So then it now puts that burden on the county to issue a permit.
Yeah. What about that person that's got one that doesn't go out into the city?
He goes out.
He lives in the county also though. They're not having to go out of the county. They're not going to have to go out of the city to get their permit. It's still in the city too. It's at the courthouse or at the sheriff's.
Well, if I keep it in the county, I can. So, so that person's got to get a county permit even though he lives in the city.
Sure.
Okay. So he's got.
It's not a one permit deal.
Yeah. Okay. I'm okay with that.
Yeah. I think, I think you're going to get into a cooperative agreement type of situation where they're going to be willing to do that. Because then they are taking responsibility for.
Yeah, I don't know. You have to talk to the commissioners about that. That's something we can't just decide. So, so originally we wanted to do is just extend it for two years. And with that in mind, I said, why don't we just do that and be done with it? I mean, you're talking about.
Well, I don't know. Okay, that's, I mean.
I mean, it's probably not even a burden for these 16 people.
I mean, make it two years, but I'd like to do away with it completely. But.
Yeah. How much is a permit cost?
15.
15 for UTVs and 25 for golf carts?
No.
I mean, because you got the St. Jen sticker, then you're going to have the county sticker for those that have it. Then you got your St. Joe sticker, your Rocky Ridge sticker, your Lake Forest sticker.
I'm, I'm ready for supporting Joe. I mean, I, I think Joe.
I mean, I got both stickers on mine.
Yeah. What do you think about this?
I'd get rid of the city one, but.
For sure. How much is the county one?
I haven't renewed mine yet.
How much is the county? You know?
I think we need to work with the county, see what they have to say.
Happy, you work with the county. Is that okay with you?
Let's go for it.
Let's keep doing what we're doing until you give us a report.
We want to do it.
We won't change it until we.
Whenever I want to.
What they would agree to.
Okay. You have anything else?
That's it.
Oh, I don't care.
I got my committee to meet, talking about.
I can burn. Can you make the report for a health conference meeting?
Is that a Thursday?
Yeah.
I don't have my phone on me, but I think so.
It'll be next Thursday.
Yeah.
You're the manager. You can make whatever you need.